Good evening, welcome to the September 23rd Board, Select Board Meeting. This meeting will be broadcast live and recorded by Foxborough Cable Access. Do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Citizens input, do we have anybody, Katie, online?
No.
Okay, nobody here. We gotta wait a few minutes till 7:05, so why don't we do a couple of the action items?
I move to appoint Tom Saban to the Foxborough Historical Commission as a full member for a term to end 5/31/28.
Oh, second.
Yeah, can't be me.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Hearing none?
Motion to appoint Deb Byron to the Foxborough Historical Commission as an associate member for a term to end 5/31/28.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None?
Move to approve a one-day beer and wine license for Bee Hoppy Brewing LLC doing business as Wormtown Brewery for October 18th, 2025, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. for Patriots' Place Harvest Fest.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None?
Move to approve Select Board Meeting minutes from September 9th, 2025.
Second.
Favor? Aye.
Aye. All right, that's, well, once you want me to move to close. Thanks, Steph, you're the only one.
We got a few more minutes.
Want me to whip through some of mine? I got a long one.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so I was just gonna mention that we, and I see the board all here, we just attended the Marilyn Rodman Performing Arts Center ribbon cutting, so congratulations to them for the beautiful patio and paint job and front door. A reminder to all that there's a board and committee training on September 30th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. right here in the gala meeting room, and folks should RSVP to Katie Lang, but if you don't, feel free to show up anyway. Foxborough Fire Department Owen Bonert was recognized nationally for excellence, and let's see what it says here, the, it's recognized by one of the nation's top emergency vehicle technicians. Out of 25 nominees nationwide, Bonert earned third place in Firehouse Magazine's prestigious Emergency Vehicle Technician of the Year Award. So this is a very big honor and it reflects the commitment of Owen to his service, and also, as we all know, he runs the, the fact that we serve other town vehicles, so it helps subsidize some of our pairs, so we're hats off to, to Owen. There's Senate Bill 299 has been sponsored by Senator Paul Feeney, there's a hearing next week, actually this week, Thursday, and what it is, it has to do with the parking fee, as you know, the state collects a parking fee for all the Route 1 parking, and it was, there's no end date to it, so it's, he's seeking to, this bill would phase out the administrative parking fees over several years with full elimination by 2031, but the, whatever funds are collected would be, in the meantime, would be used for economic development projects in Foxborough, Rantham, Walpole, and Sharon. So rather than the state having the money, it would actually go towards economic development. I did submit a letter of support, and we'll zoom into the meeting. You might have noticed, if you've driven by Town Hall, it looks empty, we have a new Town Hall parking strategy where a resident had, had commented that the employees seem to be taking all the good spaces, I'm embarrassed to say that I didn't think about that myself, so now you'll note the employees are parking on the side to leave the best spaces for the residents. So it does make it look a little empty, but it's, it's more accessible, and of course, it was a good, good idea. We are having an employee appreciation event the morning of November 13th, so for that, planning to open Town Hall at 11:00 a.m., so Town Hall would be closed in the morning till 11:00. Maura will advertise it and make sure everybody knows, but we're gonna do an event over at the community center. I'm on vacation the week of October 10th through the 17th, I'll be out of the country with limited access, Mark will be standing in for me, and Leah Gibson has volunteered so far to be on the Foxborough 250th Committee, and I might have also snookered Scott O'Donnell into it by connecting them, so stay tuned for that. And it's 7:05, so I'll stop now.
Okay. Let's go back to public hearing. We're going to waive the reading because we've already done it, actually, so this is just a continuation. Good evening.
Good evening. Members of the Board, Mr. Chair, Tom Miller from McDermott Colty Mill and Hanley, on behalf of the licensee, I can say that now, TPM International doing business is 11-0 at Patriot Place. I'm joined by Bob Saraf, the manager of record here. I can go into detail about this proposal, but the Board has reviewed it, and it is exactly the same as the one that was presented to the Board in June. I'm happy to answer any questions, I'm happy to go through it in detail if you would like, but I am cognizant of the Board's time, my client's time, and everyone's time, so I will leave it there.
I think we're all well versed, does anybody have any questions on?
No.
Obviously, you've already been open and running, it's just ABC finally finished its side of things, so I think we kinda wish you the best on it, so why don't we?
Absolutely, yeah. First thing we have to do is move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
It has to be a roll call, sorry. Mark, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Bill, yes.
Debbie, yes.
Okay.
And then move to approve an application for an alteration of premises for on-premises annual all alcohol restaurant license, TPM International, Inc., doing business as 11-0 Pickleball at 340 Patriots Place, manager of record to be Robert J. Saraf.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you, everybody.
Appreciate it.
Enjoy the rest of your evening.
You too.
You too.
We're popcorn.
We got that at the Rodman ribbon cutting.
Shameless plug.
Yeah, absolutely, that's why it's there. We can give you one too, Mark, if you want.
Do the public use, is that?
All right, you wanna go right to the motion?
Yeah, I think so.
Move to approve the use of public way application for the Halloween parade sponsored by the recreation on, on October 27th, 2025, from 2:30 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. around the common route to be down Liberty Street, left on Central Street, right on South Street, and enter the commons.
This is supposed to be the 25th, though, correct?
Yes.
25th?
Yeah, it's a typo on the.
25th.
No, no, I mean to say sorry, that was my fault, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Kristen, Kristen couldn't be here tonight, her two little ones home with sick. Still looking for judges, I'm looking at the last year's judges, if anyone's interested in being a judge, just have to email Kristen and she'll get you up there.
Well, listen, I was already prepared to offer up if, if she needed somebody, so.
Yeah, she and I just talked, and she would love to have you.
You know something, it's a great event, it was a lot of fun, it's the first time I ever had a judge. Of course, Deb owes that for her, but, and I, you know something, I dragged, I dragged her along, I said, come on, well, just, you can help me, we'll, and actually, I think I dragged Ryan, too, right? Didn't I drag my daughter? I said, come on, it'll be a good time, so we'd be happy.
Great, we're hoping for good weather, obviously, the last few years have been perfect weather with hundreds and hundreds of kids out there in their Halloween costumes, up and down, Central and on the commons, so thank you very much for approving.
There is no rain date, right?
There is no rain date because it's, it's right before Halloween, and, yeah, that's it.
That's it, okay.
Thank you for the weather for you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Mark. You wanna do the review of the capital?
Yes. So the next item is the FY26 Capitol Improvement Request. Today, the Capitol Improvement Committee, of which Bill sits on, met to discuss some requests for the special town meeting on October 27th, and I can, you have, do have it in your package there, but I can run through this. We had a request from the land use, specifically the Conservation Department, for a vehicle replacement, and which is a misnomer because there really isn't a vehicle, in the years past, people had to use their own cars, which really isn't, when we've had new employees start, they say, what do we do to visit sites, and we're like, you have to use your own car. So that's not really appropriate, so we did approve a request for $42,500 for a pickup truck, we worked with Chris and Adam at DPW to ensure that we got a vehicle that they're comfortable maintaining, and worked off a quote on that. From the Fire Department, there was a request for a brush truck replacement, the one they have now is a 2011, and it, the needs have outgrown it, this one will be more versatile in addition to being used on the brush, which the current one is solely for brush, the new one can be used for urban, it's known as a wildland urban interface, go to brush and town, so they pointed out that it will help our ISO rating because it will be one more vehicle to help in the event of a fire, and it does have a ladder, and something else, ladder, it's a pump and roll, so that means, like, apparently, the brush trucks, once you start pumping, you cannot move the vehicle, which sounds really dangerous to me, actually, but this one is a pump and roll, so you can move it once you start pumping, it has a front turret, it will shore up our ISO class rating, and it, it has 15 gallons per minute versus current 500. So for those reasons, we did approve, that's a lease payment, the, the total amount is actually $680,000 over five years, so it'll be $160,000 this coming town meeting vote.
Just to clarify, it was 1,500 gallons, not 15?
Did I write 1,500? Sorry, 1,500.
Big truck, yeah.
Yeah, thanks, we're really gonna be blasting through everything. The School Department came in and requested two mini buses for a cost of $275,000, that, what, they apparently now are, they always have six mini buses, those buses are critical to the operation, preschoolers cannot ride on regular buses because they need the five-point harness, and furthermore, they use this throughout the year, it could also be used for special needs. At this point, two of the buses are on sort of life support, in fact, they're concerned about one of them not being, passing inspection this year, so it's going to take some time, possibly, to get it, and it looks like right now, if we order it now, we might get in on 2025 or 26 pricing, as opposed to, we already know, 2027 is going up, it looked like almost $40,000. So the Board, the committee did vote to approve the 275 for the two mini buses.
Those are on a schedule two, Bill, the mini buses, or?
Well, the, the schedule typically, they were doing three buses, but they only did two buses this last year, they didn't do a minibus at all. But the bigger problem was even though one's at 100,000 miles, the other one's only at 80, but it's, that's the one that's got, it's actually in the worst shape, so.
And they pointed out that the schedule for mini buses is actually probably gonna accelerate, we're not gonna get 10 years out of them, they had, let's see, the schools here, I had a note here where it said, they went, here it is, in three years, they've already gone 83,000 miles on one of their buses, because they traverse the whole town, they're used year-round, and they just really rely on them, so we're already, they're, basically, we're probably gonna have to calibrate the schedule to ensure that the mini buses are replaced more frequently than every 10 years.
Yeah, the difference for the mini buses is the drivers are actually eight-hour-a-day drivers, not just morning and night shifts, because they're doing trips all day long. So it might be a special needs thing where they're bringing them to, you know, a training someplace in, in town, or it could be, you know, just like they said, the morning or afternoon for the preschool, so they do end up, obviously, on the road, pretty much eight hours a day in movement.
Yes, and then last, the DPW had a request for a compact track loader, that one, their 2004 Bobcat engine blew, there wasn't really something they planned on replacing, but they blew, it's 21 years old, and the cost to replace the engine would be between 10 and $15,000, and you'd still have an old vehicle. This new one will be tracks versus tires, so that's better for the turf and for the fields, so that request was $60,000. And then, those were out of, those were all general fund requests, so the general fund was $537,500. Then, under some enterprise, well, non-general fund, we had water, the Oak Street PFAS Water Treatment Plant, now that one's misleading, we've already voted to approve that, but the Bond Council, when they were reviewing all the documentation, noted that because it's over the $25,000, it should've gone through CIP, so as a formality, we had to run it through CIP, we do not have to go back to town meeting, this is the vote that already was approved by town meeting, so this is really a formality to allow the $16,500 SRF loan for the P, second PFAS Water Treatment Plant. And then, in sewer side of things, under, from sewer retained earnings, the community center sewer upgrades is $275,000, this is because the, there was one part of the project that was missed, actually connecting the sewer to the building, but also, more importantly, we, Chris, we made sure that the side streets had, whatever they're called, connection valves, so that the side streets can tie in, so that's why the Sewer Department, or the Sewer Board was interested in this, because this allows folks on side streets to tie in, and if they hadn't done that, then there wouldn't be the ability to tie in. So all in all, like I said, it was general fund, free cash is $537,500, the SRF loan is $16,500, 16,000, 16,500, my apologies, and then sewer retained earnings is $275,000. So this was all approved by CIP, and we are hoping the Select Board will also approve this.
Motion? Or any questions, I guess?
No questions from me.
Maybe just a comment, anybody at home, just, just so they remember, because sometimes when we bring something back that has to do with the community center, people will say, oh, well, I thought we were just coming in here, that, that project is, like, what, a quarter of what it would've been if we had, you know, had come through with the new building, so just to remind people, you know, sometimes stuff comes up, but it's still one of the biggest deals that we were able to.
Well, I also, I also think it's important to what Paige was saying, is that the reason the Sewer Department's comfortable with this is they know they're gonna get this money back now that everybody along the line can connect. So by doing the, the lines on the spur streets of each one, it makes those connections much easier, and then obviously, any house that goes by also has the right to connect now, based on the vote that we did at town meeting. So the Sewer Department's actually gonna benefit from this on that side of it, the town, obviously, has benefited by having another building, that's a public building, that is sewed versus septic systems, so, and I think that's the biggest advantage to everybody. And, and, you know, the community center project shouldn't have had to bear all that cost, you know, as part of this, because again, it's, it's part of, it's going to be community-based usage.
Yeah.
So when, when?
Yep. So, okay, motion?
All right, move to approve the FY26 Capitol Improvement Requests.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? Okay, I'm gonna go on to your.
Oh, wait, I want to back to me?
Yep.
Let's see, whip into this. Let's see what I have to do. Founder's Day, I confirmed with Scott O'Donnell that June 6th is the date of next Founder's Day because of World Cup, so that I, we all knew it had to be that way, but I did confirm that they, they know that, and they're doing that. The Veterans Department, can't say enough about their activities, Michelle and Lauren up there, I attended the POW MIA Vigil Closing Ceremony on Friday, it was well-attended, Amy was there before she headed out of town, as we've mentioned, the banners will be going up shortly, and here, there's a very interesting and fabulous program starting, it's House-to-House Heroes Event, and volunteers are being accepted, if you go on the front page of the website, you can sign up, but on October 4th at 9:00 a.m., volunteers are gonna meet at the community center, and the, these volunteers are going to visit every veteran in town to make sure that they, the veterans know about the benefits they can receive. So the visiting volunteers will be given documentation and materials, and then there'll be teams divided up to go visit the veterans' homes, so it's very important to share the information, provide them printed materials, offer a friendly connection, so they're gonna be short, respectful visits, but if anyone's interested in joining in, volunteers are welcome, and it's just another great outreach to ensure that nobody is left behind from the services that are available. There's also the Veterans Resource Fair, I know I brought this up, but just as a reminder, it's very important, October 18th from 9:00 to 1:00, Community Center, and then the Ice Cream Social is September 27th from 11:00 to 2:00 at the Community Center, so any veterans should be sure to sign up for that. The, from Communications, we're gonna start doing cable shows, or I'm gonna start doing them, my first victims are Chris Gallagher, DPW Director, and Mark Craig, I thought after we had done those shows before town meeting explaining the dead exclusion, we're gonna provide updates, so Chris will be in studio, and I will, it'll be quick, like 15-minute little snippets to give Chris and Mark an ability to update on the DPW expansion and the Community Center. The Foxborough Cable Access is gonna go out and shoot some footage, so it's just a way to make sure, another way to reach the members, you know, people if they don't get the newsletter or whatnot, to keep folks updated, because I know everybody's very excited about these two projects. I had the opportunity to tour the DPW expansion, and if you haven't been out there, wow, it's so different than the old building, and, I mean, the ceilings are high, it's bright, the air quality, you could just tell it's gonna be, it's just top-notch, I know the gas tanks are now open, so they're, they're making progress, and I believe, Bill, first week in December is when things are supposed to be completed?
Yeah.
So, great. Another outreach effort is Marie Almoda, our Finance Director, has, is holding two municipal finance 101 sessions, the first one was today, and I, I attended that, it was great, I actually, if any resident is interested, I have here somewhere the handout, here it is, so we can also put it on the website, but it was a great opportunity, we had probably about 20 residents there, and lots of questions back and forth, there is one more session, and that's next, next Tuesday night at 5:45, so if folks have any curiosity as to how your tax rates are set, or where the town money is spent, please sign up to go to the Community Center. Also, with respect to Communications, the Rave Alert Program, which we've mentioned, which is a way for us to outreach, residents would sign up for notifications, so if, say there was a, a water, water break, or some sort of event, there could be emergency and whatnot outreach, we've now assembled the team, and we're developing a policy, because we don't, we wanna make sure this isn't used too frequently, because you don't wanna give people, harass people, basically, so we're, we're formulating a policy to ensure that it's only used as needed, and then we will now start to reach out and have residents sign out. Again, we have no advertised positions, so we have a full roster, yeah, another one, not, we, for construction, we don't yet have our Route 140 restriping, every, they said it was gonna be on a Sunday night, every Monday, I drive down there hoping for the restriping, hasn't happened yet, but it's still supposed to happen. And then, paint containment, blasting, priming for steel beam end repairs at bridge, blah, 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 on I-95 northbound over Central Street is going to be occurring, the work is gonna begin, it would've began Monday, 9:22, and it's going through Thursday, 10:02, from 8:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. with lane closures, so folks might hear some noise, so that's them repainting the bridge, this is a mass DOT project. And let me just go back, with respect to the strategic plan, I, I just wanna bring everybody up to date, we did accept the proposals, register, I should say, the proposals, on the 18th, we have three qualified respondents, we are going to send the proposals over to you for review by September 30th, it'll be accompanied by a review sheet, an evaluation sheet, and instructions. We are gonna need to review these proposals in executive session for their confidentiality, so I'm proposing that there be an executive session on October 21st, or we can find another time if that, that date doesn't work, if our meeting's too busy. We have to decide, I think we decide at that point, you know, if there's a clear-cut winner, then great, but if not, then if you wanna do interviews, it's an all or nothing, so it's, it's interviewing all three vendors, and the questions would be standardized, that would also be in executive session, and we'll support the process, I'm, as the town manager, I have to make the, the award, but of course, given that you all are the Evaluation Committee, I would, you know, work with you on that, so just stay tuned for that, I, yes, sir?
Sorry, so if there was a clear winner, we don't have to interview, we're not under any obligation to interview all three of them?
Correct, we did, we said if needed, correct.
Only if needed, okay.
Yeah, but you would have to do all three.
If we did decide to go that way.
Yeah, so what I envision is during that executive session, you will have all independently done your evaluation, you'll, you'll submit your worksheets, you'll have a little markup work, the procurement will compile all that, we'll have comments, if there's anything clear that needs to be followed up on, we could try to do that if need be, if not, we'd go into executive session on October 21st, deliberate, discuss, see if there's any follow-up that needs to be done, and, and/or if you wanna do interviews, and we'll, we'll kind of decide at that meeting what the next steps, we'll know by then, so stay tuned, I didn't, I apologize, I wouldn't have even put this on tonight's agenda and dug in more, but I didn't, procurement, I didn't think they'd have this ready today already, so, they just got it to me about an hour ago, so it's, we're ready to go, but we, I will be sending over instructions by the end of the month, so you can do some homework. And Amy's away, so I didn't wanna rush anything with her, and that's all I have. Yes, sir?
Another question? We got an email, was it today or yesterday, about the school committee?
Oh, yes.
Would you mind, just?
So there's a vacant?
I don't remember ever having to do anything like this.
2012.
Huh?
2012, similar situation.
That was a year before my time. Okay, okay, so, so.
I have, so it says here, unexpired term fulfillment, when a vacancy on the Foxborough School Committee occurs for any reason, the Board, Select Board, and the remaining members of the Foxborough School Committee share the responsibility for filling it. As provided in the law, the Foxborough School Committee will notify the Select Board that a vacancy has been created within 30 days after it has occurred, so that's been done. After two weeks' notice has been given by the Foxborough School Committee to the Select Board, so that the voters of the town may have an opportunity to state their candidacy, the two governing bodies will meet to fill the vacancy by roll-call vote. For election to fill a vacancy, a candidate must receive a majority of the votes of the officers entitled to vote, the person so elected will fill the seat on the Foxborough School Committee until the next town election, at which time a member will be elected to serve the remainder of the term, if any. So that's how it will go.
It'll be a joint meeting, us going to them, or them coming to us?
They came to us last night.
They'll come to us, okay.
Okay, so we have to let, they've notified us, so now two weeks has to go by to sort of allow folks to do it, so I don't know, well, that would be probably October 21st, then, would be the soonest that we'd be able to do it? Because like, two weeks from now is October 7th, right, so it's?
And does that go, I'm assuming, but who knows, because like I said, I have never heard of it, I wouldn't have been on the board, obviously, either, but they'll, they'll, people will be reaching out to the existing school committee, you know, with, with a, now, if, what if by chance there's none? Nobody comes forward, would that, would, would we have to extend that, do we, I'm probably asking questions, we won't know until we hit, right? Or would they just continue to, I mean, it's not very long until the next, the next election, if, say, nobody came forward, would they just sit as a foreman?
Yeah.
Committee, okay.
The school committee also has a meeting on the 22nd, so if your meeting was packed with strategic plan stuff, we could go to them.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Just a reminder, AdCom will be meeting October 1st and 8th to discuss articles, and those meetings are at the McGinty, and they're not televised, so at the Public Safety Building, so just if anybody's interested in digging in deep to town meeting, please attend the, the AdCom meetings.
Great. Any members of the Board have any comments or updates?
Just have a, just, just a quick one, not, not anything too big, you know, we're, we're not going to be having a special day for all the members of the New England Patriots that, that go into their Hall of Fame, like we did for Tom Brady, but I think Julian Edelman, he was my favorite, number one, but I think he was just a fan favorite in general, so just a big congratulations to him, I, first time I've ever gone to an induction, you know, you know, as my season ticket, ticket sat at, at Brady's, but it was, you know, something, it was, it was really nice, he was very personable, he was, I, I didn't go up to get any autographs or anything, but just watching, he was making his way around the crowd, and congrats to him, I think he was truly a fan favorite.
Anything, Doc?
No.
Good. Only the follow-up on the Rodman, I think Paige did a very nice job on her comments there, and congratulations to them, as they said, they're coming up on their 100-year, and they've done a beautiful transformation on the building, and hopefully has a long future here, so.
Fun fact.
2027.
In 1982, I went to the movies with a boy, who then became my husband, and the movie was, can anyone guess? E.T.
E.T.
Was it your first date?
It was close.
It was a matinee.
It was a matinee.
Was it, was it a movie theater before it became like big, you know, so it was movie, first movies?
Strictly a movie theater, it was growing up, yeah.
Wow, that's pretty cool. That's a fun fact. Obviously, it worked. Still married, right?
Phone home. Phone home. Go home, right?
All right.
Move to adjourned.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.